Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, May 20th, and I will call to order at 6:30 PM, and I will call to order Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting is remote as well, so due to that, I have to read the governor's orders. This meeting will be available for in-person attendance and on Zoom. On May 29, 2023, Governor Haley signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to open meeting law to March 31st, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without quorum of a public body physically present at a meeting, locations, and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This meeting of the Freetown Board of Selectmen will be conducted in person as well as via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specifically, information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the town of Freetown's website, FreetownMA.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to this meeting may do so in the following manner: downloading Zoom and entering the meeting ID below, calling the number listed below, and entering the meeting ID listed below, or going to the website listed, and entering the meeting ID listed below. Although in-person attendance is available for this meeting, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post its town's website and YouTube channel in audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive records of the meeting, well, comprehensive records of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So I guess I should technically still say that this meeting is being recorded and will be available on a town's YouTube page. So with that, I'm gonna start. I'm gonna go to meeting agenda item number one. So agenda item number one, discussion and vote whether to approve not release the executive session minutes from 4/24/24. Right through, no issues, so any issues?
No issues.
All right, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes from 4/24/24.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Agenda item number two.
Jared, the audio isn't great, just a heads up. I can't hear you very clear. I'm not sure if your microphone or what.
All right, it's probably me because I get soft spoken. Is that any better, Trevor?
That's a lot better, actually.
All right, sorry about that. I'm glad you called that up. All right, so agenda item number two, discussion and vote on whether to approve the open session minutes from 4/24/24 and 5/6/24. No issues there.
Likewise.
All right, so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from 4/24/24 and 5/6/24.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right, so agenda item number three, discussion with students from Aponequay High School on the Brayley Road, Chase Road, and Gurnee Road intersections. So assuming that you have a presentation for us?
I do. It's right behind you. Hello, my name is Alexandra True, and I'm here with a group from Aponequay High School, and we're here to talk about Brayley-Gurnee and Chase Road intersection. So take it away, Colby.
The intersection of Brayley, Gurnee, and Chase Roads has stop signs on only two of the three streets there. From our observation, as well as the responses from the survey we conducted of local residents, it was concluded that people often speed down Chase Road, and it is very dangerous for vehicles to cross the intersection, even after stopping, since a car could fly out from Chase Road at any moment. This leads to dangerous and annoying experiences for local drivers.
Our proposed solution, in order to ensure safety at this intersection, is to add an additional two-stop signs on the existing Chase Road and make it a four-way stop. Personally, from my experience as I've recently started driving, it's hard to see the other ends of Chase Road, which is why I believe that adding these two-stop signs would make it more effective because you're able to see all four cars before making advances, especially as one of the roads leads onto a highway that causes a lot of traffic at certain times of the day. Establishing an extra two-stop signs would also be less of a cost than establishing four. The adjustment period to these changes could also be expected to be shorter as well compared to going from no-stop signs to four.
So these are the results from the survey we conducted, and we found that the vast majority of people agreed that this area wasn't safe and that there needs to be something to be done about it. The only thing we found that was in opposition to our proposal was that people thought the addition of stop signs and such a change like that would cause more accidents. But we believe that with proper warning and if people had enough time to get used to it, it would end up being fine, and it would solve more issues than it would cost.
Larissa, your research is last.
Thank you. And then I'll just talk about what we did after you're done.
So this is some of our research on the problem. Basically, Highway Department is charged in maintaining the street traffic signs, as well as Selectmen, who are the executive branch. And establishing a fourth road sign, the likelihood of accidents within this intersection would lower and public safety would increase. Obviously, stop signs are universal and easy to understand, so there's no language barrier there. And Massachusetts is already lacking in significant road safety laws, such as seatbelt enforcement and child safety. A lack of signage could further increase these problems.
Okay. We appreciate your time and thank you for hearing us out.
Does anybody have any questions for us?
Yeah, can you go back to your stats?
Yes.
Let's go back a few.
There we go.
So first of all, congrats. You guys did a really good, remarkable job displaying your information, speaking out, and fighting for a good cause. So good on you for being out here. You guys did amazing. All right. So some of your responses, you have thirty responses. How'd you guys conduct your research? You guys go out through school, parents. How'd you guys conduct it?
My dad put the survey we created on Facebook.
Okay.
And we basically just sent anyone who lives in Freetown, anyone who interacts with this intersection, if you'd please fill it out, and that's where we got the responses from.
Also talked to local residents, particularly the one on the Brayley Road intersection, the corner right there.
And I, as well as I actually asked a few other students that drive just in classes here and there what they thought on the road, because a lot of them actually go through that intersection to get to Dunkin' Donuts Rotary. Everyone goes there after school, and a lot of them thought that it was, most of them called it annoying, but it was pretty much, they were saying that they didn't like the intersection. They thought it was unsafe. A lot of students, even though they shouldn't, drive pretty fast around the area. So it's just going straight through Chase. That can be dangerous because suddenly you can be going to turn and not seeing a car, and suddenly one's shooting down 45 miles an hour, and you don't know what to do because you're trying to make your turn.
Just to keep my head straight, this one with the pole right in the middle of the road?
Yes.
Just making sure we're talking about the right one, yeah. What do you think about that pole? Should we move that thing?
That's a lot more costly.
I have a background in that kind of infrastructure, and it would be much more expensive to move the pole than to install stop signs. And I believe that it would be even more effective to install stop signs because in that case, you would have less worry about who is coming, and you would be able to focus more on the road in front of you than the road beside you.
Excellent.
We actually talked to Chief Rose back in around November, December, and we actually got a lot of the incident reports from the intersection going back, what was it, four, five years?
Two years, yeah.
I think it was five years, and a lot of the issues were due to the pole. But then, like, a lot of the things they showed actually showed that the drivers were speeding. So I think the issue could be solved with stop signs because if they saw the stop signs, obviously you slow down, you don't just blow a stop sign. So if you slow down, it's easier to make that turn around the pole to avoid crashing into it. So instead of trying to take on a larger problem and solve a larger problem, it's just a smaller solution to prevent a larger problem.
Nice. So a couple comments. I don't know, I forgot your name was?
Colby.
Colby. If you ever watch baseball, you have a great baseball voice, right? Pursue that. You know, it's one of those deep voices. Good job on that. But in your research, you guys might have found out that that bridge at some point is gonna get redone, right? So if we do end up going this route, make sure you guys are there to take a picture for us in the town, right? You guys did awesome.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Hats off to you guys. It's never easy to get up in front of people, and you all did great and spoke very clear. As you can see, Trevor was saying something to me about not hearing me. So, you know, hats off to you and great job, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have other ideas, let us know.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, keep the passion alive.
Actually, I have a question for Debbie on this. You know, I was thinking about it. I don't think we've actually had to go through the process of adding a stop sign or potentially removing one or changing anything of that nature. I guess just for our education here on the board, procedurally, what are the next steps if we were to go down this road and look at this?
So collectively, I think we have looked at this intersection. One of the first, and they brought it up, but I was gonna ask, one of our first pieces of information that we look at as collectively meaning, Victoria and the Planning Department, Chuck and the Highway Department, myself, is that we look at the incident reports or the accident reports, and those are really important to look at because we also most likely have to get Mass DOT buy-in, and they're gonna be looking for that information. And then I think that if it was something that we wanted to pursue further, it would be we look at the, we contact our engineer, and we spend money on engineering. Because one of the concerns that will happen with a four-way intersection, of course, is queuing and backing up, right? And that creates other incidences and other hazards that, you know, we need to investigate and make sure that by putting in a stop sign, we're now not creating a huge backlog of traffic that then somebody comes around the corner and smashes into the back of a car, and we have a domino effect. So that's really, that would be the next step, is to sort of collaborate within the town to determine, had a lot to do with the Planning Board and the Highway Department, whether this is something we want to pursue further. It will be then getting the engineering and what that's gonna cost and how we're gonna fund that. And then any recommended changes, how we would fund that. As we know, with municipalities, funding is always a big consideration for anything that we do. So that's really the procedure to get something changed within it. And then Mass DOT buy-in, which is a little bit more difficult to get them to say, yeah, they wanna recommend it. This is not a Mass DOT roadway. However, because of the Chase Road Bridge, and it's right there that they are, I think that they would wanna have at least some opinion, some recommendation alongside this. Did that answer your Trevor? I don't see you, but.
Yeah, thank you very much, Debbie. And yeah, to reiterate what the rest of the board said, great job, and you know, we really appreciate you coming out and giving that presentation. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have questions? No, question for you guys. There you go.
Hi, Margaret French. I was just wondering if maybe you wanted to contact Serpide and see if maybe they want to do, they can put the.
Traffic study?
Yeah, a traffic study, put the cables in the road because that will check number of cars, it'll check speed, things like that.
Who's that?
Serpide. Serpide Southeastern.
Regional Planning.
We'll send you the link.
I would go through the Planning Department. I would go through Victoria and the Planning Department.
Yeah.
Yeah. And have that conversation with her. We did do a lot of work when we did the complete streets, and I believe this intersection was looked at. So Victoria has some information already on this. So she has some of the groundwork laid out already. We had done that. So I would go through her. She's a director. She's direct in with Serpide as well as the Joint Transportation Committee, which is part of Serpide.
I'm sending it to you on an email. Go.
Yeah, follow it through. See what you guys can do. All right. Obviously, we all support you guys. So keep doing the hard work, and we look forward to hearing from you guys again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
So moving on, agenda item number four, discussion and vote on whether to approve the license for a swap meet in radio-controlled truck show at Patches Hill Farm on 6/22 and 6/23, 2024.
Yeah, that sounds like a good time.
Yeah.
You know?
Interesting.
Yeah. Swap meet and radio-controlled car truck show. That's awesome.
Somehow closed on.
What do you guys think? Good idea?
Whenever someone has passion for stuff and they follow all the right stuff, it's, you know? Yeah, I mean, everything is here. So I mean, I don't have any issues with this.
Yeah.
All right. Trevor, you good?
I'm good with it.
All right, thank you. All right, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the license for a swap meet in radio-controlled truck show at Patches Hill Farm on 6/22 and 6/23.
Motion made.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Wendy Wolf. Sorry. Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right.
The Langens from the farm just got on this.
We got good news.
Yeah, we got good news. You're good.
God, you're just in time.
Shortest meeting ever for someone. I like it. All right, so agenda item number five, discussion and vote on whether to approve digital equity implementation funding agreements between Massachusetts Technology Collaborative and the Town of Freetown.
This is just sort of an extension of a grant that we have. As you know, with the CARES Act and the COVID money, one of the main things that the government has tried to do is make sure that everybody has cable access, internet access. So they have spent money to get these groups to come out and work with the towns to assess our connectivity to internet. So this is just sort of a grant as a proven agreement with them, but they're gonna fund the whole thing. It's a grant, and they're gonna look at our connectivity and then make suggestions if we do have any areas or any populations that do not have access to internet, whether it be because there's not physical access or because it's economically not affordable. So this is just a formal agreement for that.
It's easy one. I think at this day and age, everyone has the basic right to be able to go online and do their research like you folks did, right? It's a big part of high school these days, right? In school itself. So having broadband access and internet access is extremely important to us.
Yes.
All right. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve digital equity implementation funding agreements between Massachusetts Technology Collaborative and the Town of Freetown.
Motion made.
Second that motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Item number six, discussion and vote on whether to approve the contract between the Town of Freetown and NetraSpec LLC for IT-supporting services from 7/1, 2024 through 6/3, 2025.
This agreement just has to be conditional on funding, not the town meeting.
Roger that.
Shouldn't, yeah, beyond that, it's all good. So should, do you want me to call that into the motion?
Yeah, you're just subject to funding.
All right, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the contract between the Town of Freetown and NetraSpec LLC for IT-supporting services from 7/1, 2024 through 6/30, 2025, pending funding at town meeting.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Next, discussion and vote on whether to require driver verification checks through the RMV for employees driving town vehicles.
This one makes so much sense it hurts. Yes, that's a, we should always check our drivers. Right.
I had to read this twice. So I was confused that we don't have that ready.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, so, yeah. I mean, there's nothing else to even say about that. So. This is awesome. All right, so with that, I entertain a motion to require driver verification checks through the RMV for employees driving town vehicles.
Motion made.
Yeah, I'll second that. Just one quick thing. Is this for, are we gonna do this yearly, every three years? Obviously at time of hire, but is it, you know, people can lose their license in between?
Valid point.
Do we have any kind of plan around that?
I think that we were thinking annually, and this comes about because of our insurance renewal with the insurance carrier, right? They're looking for these, and we don't have them in place. So I would say annually, we would check the things. There are some other, like our CDLs, they're checked also once a year. So I'm thinking annually. I believe, I know in the highway union contract, it requires them to notify us within 24 hours if they lose their license, and if they fail to notify us and we find out, they'll be fired. It's a fireable offense. I'm not sure about the other union contracts. I'd have to go look. But this is also something that, you know, I have to work into the union contracts and make sure that that's okay with the union. Police, you know, already do the annual checks. So fire doesn't have a formal procedure, but he is doing annual checks. So this is mostly just for our BILOR employees and just to clean up more for our insurance purposes than anything else. But.
Okay. All right, thank you, Debbie. So motion is moved and seconded, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Agenda item number eight, discussion and vote whether to approve the quote from Inception Technology, Inc. for our Board of Health scanning project.
Do you have any questions on this?
Oh, okay.
All abstain from this vote.
This is just a project to get the current documents in the Board of Health office scanned and hopefully put into our online permitting software, which is permatized. I believe it's being paid for out of the coalition, so it's not gonna actually be paid for out of the Town of Freetown's funds. But it's the contract, the work's being done with Town of Freetown. So we need to just approve the quote, really is all this is.
Yeah, I mean, anyone who's ever gone over there and seen the wall of records that they have, if we can get it all online and digitized, I mean, that's gonna be huge.
I'm actually super excited about this.
Yeah.
Can I just share something? Margaret French, Chair of Board of Health. It will, all of those records will be scanned, and they'll be digitized by address. And they'll be available for other people in town if they need to access it. So say, building inspector is somewhere and needs to reference something. He doesn't have to call the office, have Allison go look for the file and get back to him. He can immediately access that file. So it'll make sense for everybody all the way around.
So moving out of the 18th century is what you're telling me?
Yes, yes. It'll all be completely searchable. So they'll take it in two rounds, scan everything, bring it all back to us, and everything will be on a flash drive.
Amazing. Glad to hear that.
One follow-up question on this. So is it just a one-time fee? Or that is ongoing, you know, for new documents that are created? Will they automatically just as a process be scanned in and categorized? Is that how we plan on doing this? Or do we need to bring in this third party to then digitalize, you know, digitize everything on a go-forward basis?
My understanding is it's to catch up with everything that is in the office right now, and then moving forward, And then moving forward, everything will be going through, um,
Permitized.
Permitized, so it'll already be digitized.
Awesome. That sounds great. It's gonna be a much more efficient kind of tool to have.
If it works out well, I'd like to do some of the other departments, so you may be seeing that.
Yeah, great.
All on board with that, obviously. Um, so Carlos did say he's gonna abstain from this vote, so, um, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the quote from Inceptions Technology, Inc. For the Board of Health Scanning Project.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Welcome back, Carlos.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, agenda item number nine, discussion and vote on whether to approve the sign, and approve and sign the letter of support for the Massachusetts Council on Aging, FY25 Grant Opportunity for Transportation for Freetown Council on Aging. So, um, yeah, I mean, some, something else I don't, is, you know, it's just a letter of our support for them. You know, if we can get any funding for them, I'm all about it. So I, I mean, I read through it quickly and it's.
Yeah, no, they need, they need a different vehicle to get into the low areas and, and in the cities around us. So this makes nothing but great sense and if the state or federal can give us money, even better.
I was saying if it's free, it's for me. So, nothing's free, but you know.
Nothing's free. We'll make sure there's no strings attached, as least as possible.
All right, so with that, I will, um, I just lost my spot. Uh, with that, I want to entertain a motion to approve the sign, and approve and sign the letter of support for the Massachusetts Council on Aging, FY25 Grant Opportunity for Transportation for Freetown Council on Aging.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yeah.
Agenda item number 10, discussion and vote on awarding FY25 roadway material bids for highway salt treated, highway salt untreated, road striping, stone seal, 20% rubberized asphalt, stone seal, and asphalt shimming and chip seal. So, um, you know, once again, straightforward. See, we're already thinking about road salt for FY25, so. You know, everything went lowest bidder and it's, you know, all kind of straightforward, so.
I still believe it's gonna snow in Freetown someday, so this is a good idea.
Yeah.
It's gonna, it's gonna happen.
So should I be calling out which one you think? Like, I mean, I don't know that I need to, right, so.
Yeah, it's, it's on page 49 in the packet, I think, if you want to just.
Do you want me to call them out?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's up there. I mean, I can say it too. So I mean, I would say highway salt, so based on, you know, pricing, highway salt, we go to Saltine Warrior. Uh, that's untreated, highway salt treated. Um, would also go to Saltine Warrior. Uh, road striping, there's only one bid, so that one makes it easy, K5 Corporation. Uh, stone seals, uh, same thing, Allstate Construction, 20% rubberized, Allstate Construction, and asphalt shimming, Allstate Construction. So, you know, as far as straightforward as they get right for that, so. You don't have any issues with that one?
No, we use it every year. So this is a course of doing business.
All right. So, um, with that, I will entertain a motion, uh, for awarding FY25 roadway material bids for, uh, agenda items A through F, uh, as previously stated.
A motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Agenda item number 11, discussion and vote on whether to approve and use Bristol County Opera on supplementing contracts for sewer engineering up to $60,000. Debbie, you wanna talk a little bit about that one?
This one, eh, this is the contract that I, I believe we signed at the last meeting. This is regarding the sewer line engineering, where we had to do some additional engineering where the, um, pump stage stations are to go and also to fix the issue with the four-way intersection, um, where South Main Street and North Main Street go into each other in a sonnet, there is no street layout. And we've had to spend additional funds, um, engineering all of that. So you, we've approved the contract. I just need to get the funding to pay the contract and, uh, there's Bristol County Opera funds available.
These kids in front of us can appreciate this. So, you know, one of the things we've talked about is putting, you know, a roundabout over in that area. So will this help us with, this will help us with that too, right?
Yeah, because then we'll know where the road layout, so then we'll know what the ramifications are of putting in a roundabout. Right now, we can't really, we can't really say what the ramifications are because we don't know who owns what. So we're in the process of doing that. Um, it's one of those real not easy, you know, there's just no records that go back as far as that roadway, so we're trying to recreate them all. And that, that's the engineering we need for both the sewer and it will help with that project as well, or any future project, right?
And we actually did, uh, I actually did research on the project, um, about the, uh, four corners. I, I think us, there was an email forwarded to, to look at that and, um, basically, yeah, yeah, I, I was researching about that and I, I know that they're planning to establish roundabout.
Roundabout, because that's good for you, Marissa.
Yeah, I live in sort of the shores.
You get the benefit.
Yeah, and, and I guess it kind of feeds back into what you had talked about, and then I don't want to take this off on a, or, you know, in different direction, but when it's something as simple as thinking like, okay, this is what we want to do, there's all these other steps that we had to go through and that's kind of what we're doing. And I mean, it was something as making sure that the fire trucks and ambulances and, you know, big rigs that go through that intersection can make it through that intersection is what we do. So it's, it's pretty cool to watch it unfold. Unfortunately, nothing's fast, but, you know, you want to make sure that you do it once and you do it right, so.
Of course.
So I think it's good that you are in here as we sat here and talked about this, so that's kind of why I brought it up, so. Um, all right, so, um, with that, I will, um, I entertain a motion to approve the use of Bristol County Opera on supplementing contract for sewer engineering up to $60,000.
Uh, I abstain from this motion as the Board of Health Representative for this committee.
I'll make that motion.
All right, I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Then item number 12, discussion and vote whether to approve ambulance abatements and write-offs for April 2024 in the sum of $85,734.14.
It's a great number. Motion made.
All right.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Agenda item number 13, discussion and vote on first right of refusal for property located at Nine Flag Swamp Road, Lot 57 on Assessors Map 255. Oh, all right. We're, we're just gonna finish this one and then we'll go into the public meeting. I apologize. Good call, good catch. So, uh, actually, we can, you know, we can hold off on this one if you want to. We'll go straight into, um, the public meeting, so, um,
Just take, make a motion to take the agenda out of order?
All right, yeah. All right, um, so, um, with that, I'm gonna, you know, we're gonna kind of kick it out of order based on timing. So, uh, with that, I will entertain a motion to take the agenda out of order.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right, so, um, we're gonna now go being, uh, at the 7, 7, 7:03 PM. Uh, we're gonna switch it over to the public hearing. So I'm going to read the public notice. Notice is hereby given that an application has been filed for a change of manager to Kara Creelman uh, for existing alcoholic beverage retail licenses, wine and malt beverage for Neon Beverage LLC, 33 through 36 Innovation Way, Freetown, Massachusetts, 02702. A public hearing to consider the above matter will be held on Monday, 20, May, May 20th, 2024, 7:00 PM, Police Station, uh, Police Station Community Room, 15 Memorial Drive, East Freetown, Mass, 02717.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Thomas Kilmorn, representing the applicant. With me tonight is Kara Creelman, who's the, uh, new proposed manager on the change of manager application that's been submitted to the board. I know we've been before you on a few different occasions, uh, similar application. Uh, Ms. Creelman has been with, um, the Neon for about a year or so. She is certified. Um, I want to say it was TIP certification, but it's a different name. Responsible Alcohol Sales and Service Certificate's been submitted with the application. Um, again, she's been there for over a year. As I understand it, there have been no issues with regard to alcohol sales at this store, um, since the license has been granted. And if the board finds everything in order, we would ask that the, uh, application be approved and sent up the, uh, ladder to the ABCC.
Excellent. Yeah, I mean, I think you've already checked off every box that I'm gonna have for questions, right? So, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I mean, you have any?
Yeah, no, uh, those are the questions we're looking, we, we need to know to make sure we're doing it properly in our town. So it seems like you checked all the boxes. So welcome Kara, and it's Creelman.
It is, yeah.
All right.
Perfect, yeah. You did better with it than I.
I had extra people telling me the names, so I cheated a little bit.
Trevor, are you, are you good with this?
Absolutely. Sounds good.
All right, so, um, so now.
Close the meeting?
Yeah, so, uh, with that, I will, um, entertain a mo- I have to make a motion, right, to do that. I'm sorry, I should remember this by now.
So you just close the meeting and then you're discussed?
Okay, yeah. All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing, um, and then we're gonna move on to agenda item number 22, discussion and vote on whether to approve the request for change of manager to Kara Creelman for Neon Beverage LLC.
Motion made.
Second. Oh, sorry, Debbie, what's up?
Yeah, you, you make a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, that's, I apologize. I'm gonna, I'm gonna back that up. I apologize because I don't want to get this wrong and not have it go through four, so embarrassing, shame on me. Um, with, all right, so with that, I am going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right, so I'm not normally in this position, so I'm gonna use that as my excuse. But I have been sitting up here for a couple of years. I think I should remember it, but. All right, so agenda item number 22, discussion and vote on whether to approve the request for change of manager to Kara Creelman for Neon Beverage LLC.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Great.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
All right, so back to where we were. Agenda item number 13. Yeah, 13, yeah, 13. Uh, discussion and vote on, uh, first right of refusal for property located at Nine Flag Swamp Road, Lot 57 on Assessors Map 255.
It looks like conservation as well as planning, both recommend not exercising this, right? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. And it looks like it's coming out of chapter 61 forestry, so. I mean, if, if they don't want it, then, you know, there's no reason I can see that we would, we would want to try and take it, so. I say take it, buy it, so.
Right.
You, you good with that?
I'm good. No, this is, this is, uh, Dave recommended no, so.
Yeah, exactly. All right, so, all right, so with that, I entertain a motion to, um, refuse the first right of refusal, uh, for property located at Nine Flag Swamp Road, Lot 57 on Assessors Map 255.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Agenda item number 14, discussion and vote on whether to approve the library grant application.
So we don't have the, um, form that needs to be signed tonight? Um, I'm not sure, but yet the grant needs to be due soon, so maybe we can amend this and ha- give me permission to sign. This is the library grant that the, um, Nicole has been working on for the library, for the building, so maybe.
Sorry to interrupt, but I do have the form. I just didn't have the application. So when you had asked me, I have the form.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, but not the application.
No, it's my turn. Apparently, we do have the form for you to sign, so we're good to go.
All right, so, I mean, you know, it's kind of as straightforward as that, right? I mean, there's really nothing to discuss about it, so we just got Debbie off the hook for one, one less signature, right? So, yeah, I, I don't have any issues with her, you know, I mean, with this, so.
No, this was, I believe, this is part of one of this, was at the town meeting, they approved it going forward, and this is really just getting it over the, the threshold, right? So, this is good order of business.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so with that, um, I entertain a motion to approve the library grant application.
Motion made.
Couldn't find the mute button. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Zoom's tough in Canada, I tell you. Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. I have a big freight train that goes by my hotel every 10 minutes, so trying to keep on the, on the mute button, don't blow anyone's eardrums out.
That's the, the fun part of all that stuff, right, is dodging all that, having a barking dog in the background, or kids, or everything, so. Uh, you're doing a great job, Trevor. We haven't heard it, so keep up the good work.
I appreciate it.
Agenda item number 15, discussion and vote on whether to approve the master service agreement between the Town of Freetown and TM, TLMP for Fiber.
So this is the process of, we're working on trying to get the municipal fiber grant moving and getting the fiber installed for, um, connectivity to all the town buildings and to the cell towers that will have, uh, our radio communication equipment, hopefully soon on them. So this is the piece that's in Berkeley that's easier than the rest of it because TLMP owns the poles, they own, they're gonna be doing the work. And there's, um, it doesn't require procurement, it doesn't require a lot of things, so this contract's ready to move forward and we are fully funded for this. So it's just, it's just approving this and then giving me the authority to sign it in the next.
And I'm, I'm glad that you, um, stated why it was a certain company and not another, because then people will start yelling and screaming pitchforks as to why we don't have them in the rest of the town. So I'm, I'm glad that you stated those reasons and, um, yeah.
Yeah, this is great for the town, so.
We're actually advancing the town quite well when it comes to technology, so as you can hear tonight, so, so this is, this is gonna be huge for the town as a whole, so. All right, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the master service agreement between the Town of Freetown and TLMP for Fiber.
Motion made.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Agenda item number 16, discussion and vote on whether to authorize the town administrator to sign the master service agreement and service order between the Town of Freetown and TLMP for Fiber. Debbie, like a million other things, um, I don't, I don't have an issue with you signing on behalf of the town, so. I think this is about as straightforward as they get as well. I keep saying that tonight, but it's true. Um, so with that, I entertain a motion, uh, to authorize the town administrator to sign the master service agreement and the service order between the Town of Freetown and TLMP for Fiber.
Absolutely, motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to kick it over to Carlos for Personnel Board.
All right, before I say that, thank you, Deb, for signing another contract for us. We appreciate it. All right, item agenda 17, Personnel Board. Uh, for the record, item agenda 17D, I will abstain from, and I'll kick it off to the chairman, Mr. Jarziger. So, discussion and vote on whether to approve the following appointments. A, Melissa Mata, to the following one, Tax and Creative Finance Board as Board of BOA Chair, uh, effective 5/1/2024 through 4/30/2025. Two, Public Records Clerk, Board of Assessors, effective 4/1/2024 through 6/30/2024. Three, Taxation Aid Committee, effective 4/1/2024 through 6/30/2024. All right, B, Colby Ember, as Police Department Patrolman, Professionally, effective 5/10/2024 through 6/30/2024. I must say, he was the class president. Good job, Colby. C, Janine Ludwicks, oh, sorry, Janine, if I said that wrong, Public Records Clerk, Cultural Counsel, effective 5/21/2024 through 6/30/2024. As previously mentioned, D, I will abstain and pass forward to my colleague here. E, Melanie King, Open Space Recreation Advisory Committee, effective 5/21/2024 through 6/30/2024. F, Katrina Lee Disrocheus. Oh, I said that right? As single operator, trainee, part-time, effective 5/20/24 through 6/30/2024. Pretty straightforward as they come. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Yep.
All right. I entertain the motion to approve appointments A, B, C, E, and F, as, as written and said.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Uh, yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right, so to, to, you know, for Selectman Lopes is, I'm onto, uh, agenda item number D, um, discussion and vote on whether to approve the following appointments. It's, uh, Carlos A. Lopes, Public Records Clerk, COA, Library, Community Building, Community of Committee, while effective 5/21/2024 through 6/30/2024. So, once again.
Make that motion?
All right, I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right, I'm back. Item agenda 18, discussion and vote on whether to approve the Human Resource Director Job Description. Uh, so this was, as it's, as it says, this is a job description, right? This is, um, I know some, um, are thinking, hey, didn't we vote on this? Doesn't know at a recent town meeting, and the answer is yes, that was for the position. This is just updating the description for that position, so, and, uh, I think that's it. There's nothing, nothing else to that.
So it's 19 hours a week, right? Just, uh, so that would, you wouldn't have to pay any kind of, or less benefits, right, because of the, less than 35 hours, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Just from a, you know, financial standpoint, I think that's important distinction here, but the rest of it seems, you know.
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep, with, we already had one on the books. This is just cleaning it up a little bit and, uh, making sure we're getting exactly what we would need if in the event we do go this road and getting a finance, I'm sorry, an HR Resource Director, so.
Which, yeah, and I just put out there my support for this position, because I think this is, uh, you know, as the town has grown and, you know, a, a lot of our departments have grown, is, I think, you know, this responsibility is sitting right now generally with, with Deb's office. It, it's a lot and it takes up a lot of time and they're very busy working on so many other things. I just, just want to put my support out. I think this is a really, uh, would be a great role for us to fill in the town.
And, and I, I don't want to continue this on, but they are also big into, you know, employee retention, which, and Debbie is obviously as well, but, you know, it's tough to, they can only do so many different things, uh, as well as, you know, that you're not putting a person who's in charge, you know, of, of people doing disciplinary stuff. And so for a whole lot of reasons that we don't need to discuss right now, um, this, this is, in my eyes, a great idea, but, you know, this is more as far as the position description and stuff. I, I, I think it all looks in order and, and good to me, so, um.
Yeah, I can piggyback off both your comments, absolutely. Um, this is just a description for a position that's needed in every enterprise, business, or even schools have an HR director, so. Um, any further discussion? If not, I entertain the motion to approve the Human Resource Director Job Description.
A motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right, so now it's coming back over to me. Uh, agenda item number 18, announcement on temporary closure of Long Pond Landing Boat Ramp for repaving project. So recently, uh, you know, as many people might be aware and some might not be aware, that prod- that property is owned by the state and managed by the town. Uh, so the state did come to us and said that they would like to, uh, repave the, the facility, but obviously it will be shut down to the public while it's happening. Um, so, you know, we're, we're trying to be, um, as proactive as possible so that people don't try to show up to launch their boat and find out that it's closed. So, um, this is more of just an announcement. There's really nothing to vote on. I don't have, do we have the, the dates?
20th through 24th.
Yeah, it's this week.
Yeah, it's happening, uh, as ongoing as we speak.
Yes.
So it has the. So it has the water gone down low enough to allow this to take place? I know that was an issue, right? That there's so much water in the pond right now.
DPW went out down there and took a look, and they said it was, it was low enough for them to begin the project, so.
That's great.
So.
Excuse me, I have a question, if you don't, don't mind.
Please, absolutely.
There was an agreement between the state and the town regarding.
Can you, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not trying to be rude. Can you just state your name for the, the record?
David Rosa. So I'm just, it's an interesting agreement, because other towns may benefit from such having knowledge of the structure of that agreement. So I just asking that, captured in writing that agreement between the state and the, so.
Where it is and how it is, I don't want to lie to you and say how it is. I just know from personal experience that that's what it is. And that's how, when it was drafted up and when it became that way, I'm not sure, but it's state-owned and town-run.
I believe it's in the mid-nineties.
And we do have it in writing, yes.
Okay, so another town administrator might call you and ask for coffee?
Yes, it's public information, so yes.
Thank you.
Cool.
It is a, it is a, a kind of an interesting, the way it's all set up. It's not a D C R site. So a lot of people sometimes think it's state-owned, so it must be D C R, and it's not. It just is, it, state owns it from a nineties agreement, and now the town maintains it. So it's been like that for many years now. There's pros and cons.
Thank you. Great question. Agenda item number twenty, discussion and vote on whether to approve the stipend for managing beach and boat ramp for summer twenty-two-four. So as we were just talking about, you know, we, we're obviously in charge of managing this. Wonderful Luann down the end over there for the past, what, two years?
Maybe three years.
We just, this, we, I mean, we ended up, we were able to hire potentially a manager for this that you, you guys will be voting on tomorrow, tomorrow, meaning, I don't know if you want to table this stipend discussion?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a, a great call. So, yeah, absolutely. If we, if we hire someone, then there's no point in paying. So, yeah, so I'm, I'm going to table the end item number twenty.
Although if you look at the description, you see why it's so much work, right? That Luann's been doing this so much to the boat ramp and, and money, and that was, it's a good description, but I think we don't, we don't need it, but it'll be on hold in case we need it next year.
I, I, I think to your point is if we need it for down the road, then, yeah, we're good, but, yeah. All right. So I'm going to, agenda item number twenty-one, discussion on Mason Road, Mason Road Food Mart Violation with Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, A B C C, in subsequent hearings scheduled for eight-six-twenty-four, twelve P M, with the A B C C, and who, who shall represent the town of Freetown on this hearing? So, you know, local business unfortunately sold to someone they weren't supposed to. So we need representation there. So that, this is, you know, it's kind of an interesting one. And I was thinking about it, who we would have represent, so do we?
No, I, I mean, I think that's why we put it on here, because I really wasn't, it wasn't like, oh, sure, this is how you handle this. It's a video conference, so not, and I don't know what the town would have to say other than we, maybe if we were having complaints or we were having other issues with them, but none that I'm aware of. So in the past, I would have said maybe like Carlton, right, where he's got a law degree and he was a lawyer, he could have done this. I'm not sure that Chief Rose would want to be involved in this. I mean, I can certainly, I could certainly sit in on it, and I don't think it rises to the level of needing town council, because I don't believe that it had, I think the, the, what is it, the A B C C will, is gonna make their own decision and listen to the facts and make their decision. I think it's just for us to have representation.
Yeah, no, that's kind of what I was thinking, like, okay, it's council, we really don't, why should we, I don't want to say it wastes it to a bad term, but use town funds in order to have someone sit there on this when we don't, do we really need them there? Does it turn to you? Does it go to Kevin? I, I mean, I, I guess it depends on how you look at it, is to who we, I mean, if we need to have representation there.
I don't know, does the Board of Health do any checks with the alcohol licenses?
We do with tobacco, but.
Yeah, see, so.
Nothing has come up about.
Right. I mean, I, I guess for this one, I could probably sit in, and then I might have some more input on what, what we should do moving forward.
And I mean, I think the, you know, the, these rules and regulations that are forward by the A B C C are very clear, right? So they're gonna be the ones who are gonna really come down on it. It's not gonna be the town of Freetown, I think, in this case, so. But to your point is, I think it might be a good learning experience, so.
Yeah, I think it might be something like.
Hopefully it doesn't happen again.
I would check with police and fire, do you have any concerns? You know, and if, if there were concerns, we would voice them at that hearing. But other than that, I think we'd just be listening.
So is Debbie, Debbie signing up?
Well.
Nothing else to do.
I don't really want to, but I, I think that I, I wouldn't mind where I don't have to drive into Boston. It's a video conference.
I was very excited to hear you say that, because that's, yeah.
Thank you again, Deb.
And I'll report back, so if there's something that needs to change in the future, I'll have that information.
All right, so with that, I guess I will entertain a motion to approve Debbie Petty to sit in on the Mason Road Food Mart Violation with the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission in subsequent hearing for eight-six twenty-two-four at twelve P M with the A B C C for the town, as representative for the town of Freetown on this hearing.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You just get a roll call?
Roll call.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
All right, so now we're just gonna sign over, sign some documents, sign our lives away?
Took a village tonight.
It did. One signature on each one of these, right?
Yeah. New manager for Neon Beverage? The R C event?
I should ask one question to that one. Is there like a first prize, second prize? All right, so then this one, I'm also gonna pass back to you, because Carlos abstained from that.
Like I said, I could sign Charles' name.
Do you want to have him send that one to? I mean, I don't.
Hey, Debbie?
Yeah.
Do we have, I've seen fire negotiations in the agenda tomorrow, that.
Yeah, that's, you know, we're done, so, yeah, that'll be canceled, that's canceled.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep, that is, you've approved it, it's moving forward.
That'd be a six-thirty A M meeting for me, pretty early.
I know, we're all set.
Trevor, are you jealous of all these signatures right now?
I know, yeah. That's my favorite part.
I'm signing these, but you hold them, please. I'm signing them, but hold them. Would you want me to sign? I'm so sorry.
Looks like today was finally sunny at home. Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, today was a much nicer day.
How was it there?
It snowed yesterday here. I went skiing yesterday.
Lucky you.
I was gonna say, for someone who enjoys that, it's good for you.
I'm glad I'm not there.
That, that makes two of us, Debbie. I'm more jealous of the person who's down in Florida or something, not. Not you, Trevor.
Northern Alberta is beautiful.
Like I said, I'm gonna keep wishing it's gonna snow in Freetown. Next year's the year.
All right, you've already signed it, coming through.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, we're good. Any questions or concerns before I close this out? All right, so thank you, everyone. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.